This time I'll entertain a motion to approve the amendments for July 9th and 12th, 2018. Do I have a motion? Or do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, we'll call for the vote. District 1, how do you vote?
Yes.
District 2, how do you vote?
Not here.
District 3, how do you vote?
Yes.
District 4, how do you vote?
Yes.
And Ice Chairman, yes also. All right. Now, you report us from the county officials. District 1, I don't have any reports tonight. We just think the citizens will come in and show your concerns.
I'm afraid I sound like a broken record, but I want to just give my thanks for the condolences for my mom's passing, Mary Corley. She was Saluda County's first female magistrate. I hope that none of you ever encountered her firsthand. She was quite interesting in that career, but you'll be greatly missed. And then, I'll leave you go today. My stepmother-in-law of 26 years was buried. She had passed away this past weekend, Eleanor Shealy. Thank you so much for keeping the family in your prayers.
I have nothing to report. All right. This time, we will open for a public hearing. The public hearing is on ordinance number 06-18. It's to levy and impose a 1% sales and use tax, subject to referendum in Saluda County pursuant to the Capital Project Sales Tax Act. South Carolina Code Enoted Section 4-10-300 to define the specific purposes and designate the projects for which the proceeds of the tax may be used. To provide the maximum time for the imposition and collection of the tax, and the maximum amount of the net proceeds to be raised by the tax. To provide for a countywide referendum, and to prescribe the content of the ballot question in the referendum. To provide conditions pursuant to the imposition of the tax, and conditions or restrictions on the use of the tax revenue. To establish the priority in which the net proceeds of the tax are to be expended for the purposes and projects stated. To provide for the conduct of the referendum by the Saluda County Board of Voters Registration and Elections. To provide for the payment of the tax. To provide for the issuance of bonds in one or more series, tax exempt or taxable, in an amount not to exceed the aggregate of $9,400,000. Authorizing the county administrator to prescribe the form and details of the bonds. Providing for the payment of the bonds and pledge of revenues related to the bonds. Providing otherwise for the disposition of the proceeds of the bonds. Providing for borrowing and anticipation of the issuance of the bonds. Providing for the disposition of property related to the bonds, and other related matters. Now, the projects that have been selected by the committee that was appointed by the municipals municipalities of Saluda County, these projects are the Saluda County Library, $125,000. Saluda County Animal Shelter, $125,000. Ridge Spring Downtown Revitalization and Economic Development, $175,000. Reconstruction of bathrooms at Brooks Royston Park, Saluda Recreation District, $50,000. And the last item was Saluda County Detention Center, $8,434,304. This time, I'll open for the public hearing. And we've had one that has signed up to speak, and that is Mr. Jack Atkinson.
Good evening. Everybody hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I know this was on the agenda last month, and it was cut off, but I had followed with Mr. Woodfield my objections to it, and I'm hoping that you all got copies of that and were able to read basically what my feelings are. I just, I don't believe in sales tax referendums. I think it's your responsibility to raise our taxes. We as citizens should never want to raise our taxes. We should want to lower them. But that's beside the point. Okay, I'm not going to go into a lot about this, my objections to it, and my objections to sales tax referendum referendums in general. I keep reading in the paper about what's happened in Richmond County with theirs, and I don't like what I read. I don't know how much of it's true or not, but I sure don't like the way theirs are going. The only thing I would say beyond what I have said is that whatever you all decide to do, the first thing I would ask is that the, how did the title is here? The way that referendum is to be shown on the ballot, I think should be part of the ordinance. To me, I don't see any connection between the ordinance you've written and what we're going to do. And what we're going to do, basically, is outline what's going to be listed on the ballot. So, I would ask that you consider that from a legal and proper standpoint. The other thing I would mention to you is that you have until, and this is at the chairman of the election board, you have until noon on Wednesday to have it all in the elections office. That's the deadline. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Atkinson. Is there anyone in the office? Now, we'll close the public hearing. At this time, I would like to recognize Amanda Corley for ideas on litter control for Saluda County for a public presentation. Miss Amanda, just remind her of seven minutes.
Oh, yeah, I won't take up that long. Because honestly, I have several ideas. One and probably the most valuable being, I spoke with Palmetto Pride, and the lady that I guess is over it or over our area, and I'm not exactly sure how it works, said that she'd be more than willing to come speak at a county council meeting if she knew about them. And so I told her I'd get her into the next one if that would be an option. I was under the impression that Palmetto Pride only handled state roads. They also offer grants to small communities. According to the website, grants of like $10,000 for small communities. Now, with that, I'm not exactly sure what all it would entail, as far as it would pay for a person or whatnot, whatnot. I spoke with Mr. Jones on the phone about the possibility of maybe just adding into someone's job description, such as roads and bridges or something, that when a call specifically comes in, they can run out there and grab it. Right now, there's nobody. There's nobody. And things like a bag of trash. Well, the sheriff's office is too busy picking up trash, obviously. They've got calls. But when roads and bridges is out there cutting grass, or grading roads, or whatever they do, instead of pushing things off to the side because it's not in their job description, can't we just add a little line and also pick up what you step on? I mean, you've got to walk around, they've got to walk over it. Why can't we just add a line to their job description so they know they're supposed to also pick it up? It seems like a very simple thing where we don't have to pay anybody extra, just have an extra sentence into a job description. Not saying that they have to go pick up everything everywhere, but when specific calls come in, or when you're tripping over trash, pick it up. It seems kind of simple. Maybe I just don't know the whole story because it seems overly simple to me. And that's really all. I mean, it seems like a simple idea, and I just don't know why I'm the one that's thought of it. Maybe there's a reason that it's not being applied that way, but let me think about it.
Thank you very much. Okay, at this time, we'll entertain a motion for the third reading on ordinance number 06-18. It's to levy and impose a 1% sales and use tax, subject to a referendum in Saluda County pursuant to the Capital Project Sales Tax Act. South Carolina Code Enoted Section 4-10-300 to define the specific purposes and designate the projects for which the proceeds of the tax may be used. To provide the maximum time for the imposition and collection of the tax, and the maximum amount of the net proceeds to be raised by the tax. To provide for a countywide referendum, and to prescribe the contents of the ballot questions in the referendum. To provide conditions pursuant to the imposition of the tax, and conditions or restrictions on the use of the tax revenue. To establish the priority in which the net proceeds of the tax are to be expended for the purposes and projects stated. To provide for the conduct of the referendum by the Saluda County Board of Voters Registration and Elections. To provide for the payment of the tax. To provide for the issuance of bonds in one or more series, tax exempt or taxable, in an amount not to exceed the aggregate of $9,400,000. And authorize the county administrator to prescribe the form and details of the bonds. Providing for the payment of the bonds and pledge of revenues related to the bonds. Providing otherwise for the disposition of the proceeds of the bonds. Providing for borrowing and anticipation of the issuance of the bonds. Providing for the disposition of property related to the bonds, and other related matters. And do I have a motion?
Second.
Do I have a second? There. And the projects, Saluda County Library, $125,000. Saluda County Animal Shelter, $125,000. Ridge Spring Downtown Revitalization, Economic Development, $175,000. Reconstruction of bathrooms at Royston Park, $50,000. And Saluda County Detention Center, $8,434,304. Is there any other discussion in the council? Okay. This time, we'll call for the vote. District 1, how do you vote?
District 1 votes yes.
District 2 is not here. District 3, how do you vote?
Yes.
District 4, how do you vote?
Yes.
And Ice Chairman vote yes. This motion has been approved. Number 2, we'll entertain a motion for second reading on ordinance number 07-18. An ordinance to amend the code of ordinance, Saluda County, South Carolina, Chapter 6, Building Regulations by Adding Section 6-6, Building Permit Fees. Do I have a motion?
No.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Okay. Yep. If not, we'll call for the vote. District 1, how do you vote?
Yes.
District 2, how do you vote? Not here. District 3, how do you vote?
Yes.
District 4, how do you vote?
Yes.
And Ice Chairman vote yes. At this time, we'll entertain the motion for second reading on ordinance number 08-18. It's an ordinance to amend the code of ordinance, it's Saluda County, South Carolina, Chapter 16, Manufactured Homes, Section 16-2, Performance Standards for Manufactured Homes Permit Fees. Do I have a motion?
No.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, we'll call for the vote. District 1, how do you vote?
Yes.
District 2 is not here. District 3, how do you vote?
Yes.
District 4, how do you vote?
Yes.
And Ice Chairman vote yes. All right, at this time, we'll recognize our economic development consultant, Ed Borger, to present the consideration to award the contract for the Duncan Road Waterline Project to serve SC Pet Food Solutions, and for additional funding.
Thank you, Mrs. Chairman, members of council. As part of the working with South Carolina Pet Food Solutions to bring their project there, we agree that we would look to find some funding sources to assist them in having a water line, public water line, run to the property for their processing. We engaged in working with the Saluda County Water and Sewer Authority, who would eventually take this line and be responsible for operating and maintenance. Worked very closely with them, and through them, used their existing contractor, contract engineer, MBD consulting engineers out of Conway, to develop plan specs and do the administrative portion of creating the documents, and going through the process, you know, for the full of the, everything was duly advertised publicly in proper notice, and all was given. Bids were received here earlier in the month. And I'll have to say, it was close to having a heart attack out the front when it was, because the first bid that came in was like $953,213 on a project we had budgeted in the neighborhood of $525,000. The bids continued to, you know, come in surprisingly high, but we did have one bid that came in very close to what had been budgeted. That bid was Palmetto Utility Group out of Branchville, South Carolina, and the amount there was $494,298.75. The reason, one of the reasons why the amount of the bids was higher than the projected budget was because there was an additional 920 feet of line added. When the initial budget was done, it was done off base maps, you know, estimating linear feet from the existing point where we would tie into the system at Duncan and Highway 39 to the site. We used the far corner of the property line, frankly, you know, as a terminus point, but in fact, we needed to come all the way up to the initial 900 feet in order to make it come to the planned entranceway, you know, into the plant site, where then it would be on to the South Carolina Pet Food Solutions responsibility to do all the work off-site, I mean, on their site, pardon me. We are over budget, but the, you know, as I've stated in the memo, the, you know, essentially, the REA Rural Infrastructure Authority grant covered 75% of the construction cost, and that's $338,663, what we had budgeted. The Saluda-Aiken-Echfield-McCormick partnership had committed $190,000, you know, to the project, leaving us, you know, still about $20,000 short. We have an existing grant that we closed out. That was a grant from Aiken Electric Co-op. This was for the sewer line that went from the, you know, existing rail site that we have in Ridge Spring to the Amy Farms Seed and Feed and Hattery. That was a project that was funded by the Aiken Electric Co-op. Our responsibility was putting that sewer in. There was, at the conclusion of that project, there was a remaining $15,661 remaining, you know, in that grant, which had not been used. I contacted the co-op, asked them if this money could be reprogrammed to be used for South Carolina Pet Food Solutions, seeing as, essentially, serving the same parent company that they did before. They graciously agreed to allow us to do that. In addition to that, I ask the Aiken Partnership if they would be willing to up their contribution from commitment from 100,000 to 200,000, in the more additional $10,000, and will graciously through doing that. That still left us a delta of about $6,624.75. You have, you know, in your reserves, an account in the economic development reserves that is titled Infrastructure. Within that account are $83,995,000 that has been in that account, and it has been not been used. That account, and please, those of you, and it kind of preceded me, but I do believe that recall the action was taken. This was the timber account, what was at one time called the timber account, where it was funds that were generated where the county had some property timbered, and so that money's been, was reprogrammed to recategorize as the infrastructure account for the purpose of using for water and sewer projects. So, what I am asking you, in order to fulfill this contract contractual amount, is that if you appropriate or allow that $6,624.75 to be used, you know, for this project, and that same, and then finally, of course, to award the contract to Palmetto Utility Group for the amount of $494,298.75. This is consistent with the recommendation from your consulting engineers, who have analyzed the bid tab, and researched, and come to you with our recommendation. And so, any questions? Matthew can answer.
Hey.
Yes, sir.
Along that water line route, will the local homeowners be down here in that plane?
I cannot speak for the Water and Sewer Authority, but I do believe, I do believe they have certainly interested in getting more customers and making it, and it is a public line. It is not a private line, just to say. So, it should be, yes, it would be available.
Talking of Jason Phil, what they, that is their hopes for others to take on to the water line?
And of course, now, the other benefit to that, that many times we forget, as a part of the system, there are five hydrants going in, you know, on that line. So, the opportunity for increased fire protection services regardless of whether you apply them, homeowners tie into the line for their own personal use, they should see a significant benefit by having the, you know, fire service, fire protection capacity that part.
All right. Anything else? All right, thank you. So, at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion for Saluda County to award the contract for construction of a water line to serve SC Pet Food Solutions to Palmetto Utility Group in the amount of $494,298.75, with the entire project cost include engineering, acquisitions, administration, for a total amount of $560,948.75. With the full cost to complete the project to be funded from the following: SC Rural Infrastructure Authority Grant of $338,663. The Aiken-Echfield-McCormick Saluda Partnership, $200,000. Saluda County Grants, grant funds from Aiken Electric Corporate, $15,661. And the remaining balance needed of $6,624.75 to be funded from the infrastructure reserve account. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion at this time? All right, we'll call for the vote. District 1, how do you vote?
Yes.
District 2 is not here. District 3, how do you vote?
Yes.
District 4, how do you vote?
Yes.
And Ice Chairman vote yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Borger. Okay, for our new business, I want to entertain a motion for first reading on ordinance number 09-18. It's an ordinance to grant an easement on property owned by Saluda County located on Industrial Park Road, Saluda, South Carolina. Do I have a motion for this?
Second.
Do I have a second? Okay. Is there any discussion? This is the section for the cost of, okay. No further discussion. We'll call for the vote. District 1, how do you vote?
Yes.
District 2, how do you vote? Not here. District 3, how do you vote?
Yes.
District 4, how do you vote?
Yes.
And Ice Chairman vote yes. All right, at this time, we'll recognize jail administrator Janice Erkel for the replacement of the dishwasher at the Saluda County Detention Center.
Good afternoon. I'm here to ask for a replacement of the dishwasher at the Saluda Detention Center. You'll find in your packet a letter that I wrote. The one that is there has served its purpose. It's very worn out. We have replaced and worked on it numerous of times, and it has become very costly to repair. Research was done. I'm trying to find a new dishwasher. We found a company, Norvell Fixer and Equipment Company, and the dishwasher is a Hobart dishwasher, doormat, ventless. The sale price of it is $15,072. The taxes is $1,055.4. To install is $2,845, with a total cost of $18,972.4. And if this dishwasher is approved for the dishwasher room to replace what we have, also, we will have to take and take the old one out and gut that room and paint it before the new one can be installed as well. We do have MA workers that can assist, manage with doing this project, to get, so we can get prepared for the new dishwasher to go in.
All right, let me just, one moment, let me get this motion read. This time, I'll entertain a motion to purchase a Hobart dishwasher as referenced in the agenda package from Norvell Fixer and Equipment Company Incorporated, in the amount of $18,972.4 to be funded from the jail renovation account. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, at this time, is there any questions, Ms. Jennings?
$2,000 to install it.
$2,845 to install.
What kind of warranty do we have on this Hobart? I know they are good product.
I've got the paperwork here. Let me see if it says, because I don't know. That's the, we have a Hobart that's in there now, if I'm not mistaken.
Eighteen months. Did I get eighteen months, I think I see?
Uh, they wrote here.
If Hobart installs it. Is that what I'm looking at?
Six, two, six, two.
Extra, my, extra six months, so a year plus six months. That's what I've been asking.
All the, and install, installation notes, and if what's not included, and additional items?
Yes.
So, it's 12 months without them installing it, six months extra if they install it, eighteen months. Yep. Okay. Any other questions? No, thank you, Ms. Jennings.
Thank you.
We'll call for the vote at this time. District 1, how do you vote?
Yes.
District 2 is not here. District 3, how do you vote?
Yes.
District 4, how do you vote?
Yes.
And Ice Chairman vote yes. This motion has been approved. All right, at this time, we'll recognize coroner Keith Turner to present a request to fill the vacant chief deputy coroner position due to the hiring freeze.
Mr. Chairman, Councilmember, Ms. Allen, Ms. Gabe.
Mr. Chairman, council members, Ms. Santos, Ms. Gavine, as the chairman just said, I'm here tonight due to the hiring freeze to ask y'all to allow me to fill the chief deputy coroner position.
Does anybody have any questions? All right, so at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to grant the request to fill the vacant chief deputy coroner position due to the hiring freeze. Do I have a motion? So, do I have a second? With no second, that motion has fallen.
Thank you.
All right, at this time, we have a reappointment for the Saluda County Fire Board. I'd like to entertain the motion to reappoint Charles Gardner to represent Old Town Volunteer Fire Department on the Saluda County Fire Board with the second term expiring June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two. Do I have a motion?
Some of it.
Do I have a second?
Right.
Any discussion? If not, we'll call for the vote. District one, how do you vote?
Yes.
District two is not here. District three, how do you vote?
Yes.
District four, how do you vote?
Yes.
And the highest chairman vote yes. All right, at this time, we'll entertain a motion for council to go into executive session pursuant to section thirty dash four dash seventy and of South Carolina Code of Law nineteen seventy-six as amended to discuss or to receive legal advice in relation to a contractual matter involving building codes and return at the call of the chair. Do I have a motion?
Some of it.
Do I have a second?
Right.
Any discussion? If not, we'll call for the vote. District one, how do you vote?
Yes.
District two is not here. District three, how do you vote?
Yes.
District four, how do you vote?
Yes.
And the highest chairman vote yes. We are in executive session.